So with this, we'll begin with the city council candidates. And I let me introduce them. Sarah Meganhart, Trey Roder, Anne Williams, and Rob Zimmerman. And we will go alphabetically, starting with one.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters Shaker Chapter for hosting this public forum and for the wonderful work they're doing with the Fair Districts Ohio. It's important work that helps all of us. My name is Sarah Meganhart, and I'm running for Shaker Heights City Council because I believe in the power of local politics. I consider myself a citizen legislator. I grew up in Cleveland Heights, where our house was always open to young and old, rich and poor, black and white, Christian, Hindu, Muslim, and Jewish. There, I learned the importance of civic engagement, the art of debate, the power of diversity. I learned to speak up and to stand for something. I have made a career of helping people through nonprofit management. I started various nonprofits. One in particular became a national model, providing day labor as a living wage. I did consultant work for Lorraine Community College for their workforce development and innovation centers. Most recently, I found it helped found baby's neat boxes with four other Shaker moms, all while raising a family. My experience in nonprofit management has helped me to understand the complex issues facing a diverse community, to manage and allocate funds, and to skillfully find collaboration and compromise when needed. I've lived in Shaker Heights for 16 years, and I believe that strong communities are built on the four E's: equity, economy, environment, and the fourth, I would argue, would be education. In closing, I would like to help you...
Thank you.
Okay. That's what I thought of as important.
I'd like to thank the League, and I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. And I'd like to give a special shout out to the community market that just happened up the street here. That's an example of what happens when we work together. Speaking of working together, to serve on council requires being part of a team, and it also requires individual effort. As part of the team on council, I'm proud to see the work that's happened on the Van Aken District in the last four years, the work that's happened on environmental sustainability, and also on neighborhood revitalization, among other issues. As an individual, because I'm a member of council, we are now within weeks of opening a new teen center. And one of the young ladies, Jose, who helped us plan it, is right up front here, so you can ask her all about it when we get to talk outside here. Because I'm a council, we're saving money every year and increasing our service because we outsourced our jail to Soler. More contracts are bid out because I forced that issue, and that's leading to cost reductions as well. We have a more robust business plan for the Van Aken District, where we're focused on making it contribute financially to our community, and a number of streets are safer tonight. On November 7th, I ask for your vote, so I can continue working on these items for you and for Shaker. And I also ask for your vote, so we can work together to develop a growth plan for our future. I'm calling Shaker 2030. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. And I also wanted to thank the League and the library for sponsoring this, and for all of you coming out tonight. I'm Anne Williams. I'm running for my second term on city council because I want to continue my work with my fellow council members, city staff, and the residents, to work on the issues that impact our city as a whole and individuals, our individual residents. And I just want to mention three areas of particular interest to me. One of them is neighborhoods. And I want to continue working to implement the 2015 Neighborhood and Housing Plan. And one example of that is working on infill housing in the Morland neighborhood, which was hard hit by the foreclosure crisis. And in fact, there are over 80 vacant lots in Morland, and we're just starting to work on that, and we're making progress. I also want to work on a new task force, a human relations task force, that is just being formed now with resident city staff and council members to address some of the issues and try to figure out how we, as community, can make our, all of our residents feel welcome and valued regardless of their status, their national origin, their race, or sexual orientation, and also how to make our community more welcoming to refugees and immigrants. And finally, Sustainable Shaker. I want to continue the work on the task force, which has come off the list of ideas on how we can make our city more resilient and work with the city on implementing some more energy-saving goals.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you. I want to thank the League for hosting this event. I want to thank the voters of Shaker for electing me to city council. Most importantly, I want to thank my wife Lisa. Without her, we would not be on this stage. It is my view that never before in our history has city government been so important. The federal government is basically dysfunctional. State government continues to take resources from local government. In this environment, it is critical that our city government function. I'm here to say that it is functioning and functioning well. Think about how far we've come in a few short years. The recession, the foreclosure crisis, and changes in state tax policy really hit our city hard. So we, in city government, we got to work. We made hard budget choices, cut millions from our budget, we asked our residents to pay more, and they did. Now our budget is balanced, our bond rating is excellent, our fiscal situation is very strong, and we are now at a transformational moment. The Van Aken District opens next year. Our long-held dream of a downtown Shaker is about to become a reality. This is something I've spent a lot of time on as council's representative on the planning commission, with work zoning appeals. There is so much more work to do. Next week, we will be having a meeting about the variances for the food hall. You are all invited. I will also say that we will continue with sustainability policies, fixing our roads and bridges. We will lead the way for protecting our green spaces and recreational opportunities. We have a very bright future in this community, but it depends on experienced, knowledgeable, local elected officials who are involved in the community and are laser-focused on providing the best quality of life for all of you. I believe I've done that as a member of city council. I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of you being so timely. Okay, we'll start with the questions, and since, I think we'll go to Trey to be the first.
That's how they're going.
How can the city strengthen communications with residents? How can the city and its committees be more transparent with its residents? You have one minute.
Yeah, I think that's a great question, in particular in this time, because this is a time where people are looking to be more involved in their government and in the decisions that we make, and that is, that's a good thing. The public meetings, city council meetings and our committees are public, but many people aren't aware of them, aren't aware of some of the issues that we're dealing with. So my belief is that as part of Shaker 2030, a growth plan that we will be creating, that I'd like to see us create in the future, we will have opportunities for everyone in the community to participate in that process and to put your fingerprints on what is most important to you in the future and where you think we should direct our scarce resources in the future. So we're looking at potentially in the fall of next year, based on conversations I've had with the mayor, to begin the conversation around Shaker 2030 for potentially a 2009 community-wide discussion of what our future looks like.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to say something about that?
Yes, I'd just like to make a couple of comments, just following up on Councilwoman Roder's comments. A couple of things that we can do to make our city council meetings more transparent. One of the things we have just started doing is putting up audio tapes on the website, so you can listen if you'd like to, to the city council meetings, which I think is an important step. I think we can do a better job even involving our residents on our city committees. I would like to see that process opened up, so that people can apply, submit their qualifications, and be placed on committees, because that is some of the most valuable input that we have on our committees is from our resident members.
Yes.
Sure. So all of that is absolutely correct, and I just want to emphasize one other point. The committees are so critical, because we're very fortunate in this community. We have a lot of really, really smart and talented residents, and we call upon them very often. I mentioned during my opening remarks, the tough choices that we had to make on city council during the fiscal crisis. Well, the mayor appointed his task force to look at potential cuts in ways we can be more efficient in government. We were calling on people with experience in business and finance and other areas that were very, very important to us. I, myself, got my start in city government as a member of a committee. I was a citizen member of the Safety and Public Works Committee, and then sure enough, a couple of years later, I got myself elected to city council, and I became chair of that committee. I think that's a success story that all of you can be part of, and that's the beautiful thing of Shaker, we're all in this together.
Thank you. Ms. Meganhart?
Thank you. I would just like to build on what the rest of the people on the panel have said. I think that we can update our website and create really like almost like a basic feed of the issues that are coming up, and not just to city council, but in front of the committees, because the committees is where the work is done, is where the work is done. So if you know what's happening in council, by the time you come to council meeting, really the decisions have been made, and the hard work happens in the committees. So I love your idea, Anne, about including more people in those committees. So I would really like to just add that for people to know what's happening on committees and meeting, they have to participate.
Okay, thank you. The next question. What two or three factors do you see as critical to achieving lasting economic growth for our city? And we'll start with Ms. Williams.
There are three factors. So I think what we can do to have sustained growth is to continue to build, to make our city welcoming not only to businesses but to residents as well. I think a key component of economic development is neighborhood development and revitalization. So I think that is an important factor in it. I think we are, have made great strides in being more open to businesses moving into Shaker. We can continue to work on that. We have a tremendous Department of Economic Development that's done a great job. I think we have to continue those efforts. We have to continue our efforts to market the various business places, not only Van Aken, but also along the Leash Grinble corridor, to encourage business, and I think that's probably the best way to go about it.
Sure. So I'm going to highlight two factors related to the Van Aken District. And I'm not to say that these are the only two factors, but because I've been so involved in the project and continue to be, I really want to emphasize my answer right there. Think about this, folks. We have a $100 million development coming online next year, okay? Nothing like that has ever happened in Shaker's history. We have to do it right. And we're going to be laser-focused on doing it, making sure that our economic assumptions were correct, our tenant mix is what we had planned for, our relationship with our developer is good, the impact on safety forces, neighborhoods. We have to get it right, because it's so important. And then the other thing I want to emphasize, since there are two factors, is next year is just the first phase. There are other phases down the road, including the planned construction of an office building, which could bring very substantial revenue to the city of Shaker Heights and really worth a diversified tax base.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Meganhart?
First, I would like to commend the city for the hard work they've done so far on the economic development time in the Van Aken District. And I think further, with a city like ours designed to be a bedroom community and oasis from the city, we need to be extra creative and responsive to the changing businesses, the change of way businesses are done today. I would propose taking a look at, one, how we encourage businesses to move to Shaker; two, work with existing businesses, how we work with existing businesses; and three, how can we act as a catalyst, something as an incubator for new enterprises? Are there ways in which we are unintentionally hamstringing ourselves? Can we look at how we have always done business? Is there a way that we can really move ourselves into 2017 and be on the forefront of those issues?
Ms. Roder?
Thank you. My main response to how do we grow is one that I've already given, and that is through Shaker 2030, which is specifically intended to be a growth plan, which enables us to look holistically across the schools, the city, the business community, the residents, to develop our path forward. So I'll share how I think about financial sustainability. This is a community that has many different opinions on its tax burden. We know that the tax burden is high. Some people are more comfortable with it than others. But what we uniformly agree on is that we want to make sure that money's being spent as efficiently as possible. So as chair of the 21st Century Government Task Force, we are specifically focused on finding areas where we can maintain or improve the quality of services at lower cost. And by doing that, we continue to maintain the value that we are as a community, but we do it at a lower cost, and that makes us more attractive to others.
Thank you. And taxes is one of the things that we've got questions about. So part of it is, Shaker has a high tax rate relative to neighboring communities. How can Shaker attract new residents? And how do you see the three taxing authorities working together in the future? And Mr. Zimmerman, please.
Thank you very much. So yes, we are all very aware that our tax burden is very high. And I touched on this actually in response to the questions, which maybe you've seen online and will. To me, it's a value proposition, plain and simple. If people feel like they are getting value for their tax dollars in Shaker Heights, whether the taxing authorities, the city, the schools, or the library, they will move here and they will stay here. And if they don't, they won't. And that informs everything we do on city council. We know that. We know it is expensive to live here. So what do we do on city council? We try to spend your tax dollars as efficiently and wisely as possible. We also look for creative ways to attract new taxpayers here, including business taxpayers, and that's what the Van Aken District is all about. We do collaborate with the schools. We had a lot of conversations with the schools about the tax levy that we just voted on this past May, about what the appropriate amount was. And yes, we all know that there's going to be a community discussion that's already ongoing about the future of the library. So again, it's about all of us working together, and it's about the value proposition.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to address that? No? Trey?
I'd like to highlight the three taxing authorities working together, because that's a critical point. A lot of our opportunities as a community, not only from a cost standpoint, but from a benefits standpoint, from a value standpoint, are at the intersection of the city and the schools and the library and the residents and the business community. So it's important for us to continue to find ways, such as the community market that happened earlier tonight, such as the teen center that'll be opening in several weeks, to have all of these organizations work together, not only on the cost side of the equation, to look at our capacity, to look at how we're spending our money. By capacity, I mean the buildings and facilities that we have, because we do have some open space, but also to look at the value that we're offering. Because a lot of the most challenging problems and issues that we face as a community are the sorts of issues that don't neatly fit into just one of those organizations. But when we work together, we can deliver the best solutions.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I just wanted to add a quick comment on this, and I agree with one of my colleagues, and this is value to this community, because I think there is a tremendous value. But I do hear consistently about the tax burden, and I think we have to be mindful of that. And I think one thing we do need to consider on city council is to look at the reserves of the city now. We have a lot of money in reserve well above what our guidelines, our established guidelines. And I think we need to take a thoughtful look to see if there's a way that we, as a city, can relieve some of the tax burden to our residents. Thank you.
So Ms. Meganhart?
I don't have much to add. I would also say that Eric Borden would agree with Trey when he said that the three taxing authorities need to work together. They are really three parts of a whole. How can we work together to, you know, make sure that we are valuing supporting one another? And because the city, our residents, we don't think of the three departments as, the three taxing authorities separately, are all important parts of our community. And just in terms of how we attract residents, I think that that briefly goes back to equity, economic development, or diversity, and environmental sustainability. With those three lenses, we are much more desirable to other people as they move to the community, and they look at our city, if they see that we are strong in those areas, we just become much more desirable.
Okay. How is Shaker currently addressing concerns over environmental issues, such as lead containment, and in what ways should we do more? And your back is number one again.
When you said environmental issues, I thought you were going to ask more about environmental sustainability. In terms of the lead paint issue, as I am not a member of the city council currently, I don't know that I have that much more information than you would. I have done some research. I know that in 2013, the Shaker did a study to see what our lead levels were in our children and our students. And they've found, at least based on what I can understand, they found that all of our residents, all the children, had lead paint. And if anything, the residents in the higher-income areas had slightly increased level of lead. So this is really an issue that affects all of us. We should care no matter who the person is, but it really brought home. Beyond that, I think that we could probably do more and have more information on the website and connect more closely with the county services, what they're doing to help evade lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roder?
Yes, thank you. Briefly, I want to build on the comment that Councilwoman Williams made, which is that the city has large cash reserves. And I think the point is very well taken. And then, as we look at Shaker 2030, as we look at our plan for the future, it's important that government don't hold too much cash, lest we find a way to spend it. And we talk about, what does that mean? Do we want to invest that back into the community, or do we want it to be in some form of tax relief? That's the sort of conversation we should be having in the coming years. As far as the lead that you mentioned, my mind goes to two places. One is water, and the other is paint. So from a water standpoint, after some very well-publicized incidents that happened in other cities, we have taken a look at this. We thankfully do not have the same problem here, although it is something that we closely monitor. And in terms of paint, there are some programs through the city and through the county where we look at some of the neighborhoods that are more prone to this, and also where we help individuals who might need to repaint or make their homes safer. And we do proactively monitor as well to ensure that homes are safe.
Ms. Williams?
Building on these comments, I would echo what Councilwoman Roder said. As far as the city, talking about lead abatement, looking at what the city does, and we have been doing some monitoring, and will continue to do so, and the county services, and also providing, we have some programs that provide low-interest loans to people, to residents, to do some repairs on their homes, especially in these kind of areas, and especially for seniors. In addition, as far as sustainability in general, again, I'd refer back to the Sustainable Shaker Task Force, which, as one of its issues, looks at questions of contamination in the community. And it's a great resource for questions like this to come, that we attract, break up into subgroups, and again, rely on many of our resident members with their expertise to help guide us through. So we continue to look at these issues.
The one thing I would say about lead abatement is that it is very much an issue that involves state government, county government, and city government. And this, I said in my opening remarks, that sometimes I feel almost like we're under attack by the state. And frankly, there's not been sufficient support by the state of Ohio for lead abatement, particularly in older, inner-rink suburbs like Shaker Heights. In fact, the legislature considered earlier this year to act away from it. Even more devastating cuts towards programs geared towards lead abatement. So that's to me, the reason why we all have to be very engaged with our members of the General Assembly, to make sure that our issues are being addressed. The other thing that I would mention with regard to sustainability and lead abatement in general, is what we do to maintain our housing stock. We've had to do quite a few demolitions in quite a few areas. We are now in a situation where we are actually supporting at the city level, brand-new housing starts, brand-new houses in Southern Morland, something we've not seen since 2002. That's a good way to deal with it, by new construction environmentally safely.
Okay, another question. What practices are you planning to help seniors age in place? What new activities or programs do you envision for active seniors? And Mr. Roder, you're first.
This is a great question. I'm actually looking for my neighbor who I had this conversation with recently. There's Harry. Yes, we have had many conversations on this. As a sidebar, I was interested to learn, a few weeks ago, I wanted to know what was going on with the Shaker real estate market. I went to the Howard Hannah office and talked to the agents there, and they shared with me that senior housing, as we've known for some time, is not only a challenge in Shaker Heights, but it's a challenge in many of the eastern suburbs of Cleveland. So this is an opportunity we have as a region. As far as our seniors are concerned, I think it's about continuing to find ways to find housing that's appropriate for seniors. And from a program standpoint, this again comes back to the intersection of our different organizations, through schools and library and city, and particularly the city through our rec department and some other programs that we have. What can we do to continue to grow holistic wraparound services for our very important senior community?
Ms. Williams, if you have some?
Well, I think this is one of the exciting things about this new infill housing in the Southern Morland neighborhood. So this housing is designed to, the proposals that are coming forward, and these came out of the design competition that the city held earlier this year, came up with some fabulous designs for these infill lots. And these homes are designed to be perfect for aging in place. A lot of them can be designed with first-floor masters and bathrooms, so you can live on one floor. But it's also attractive housing to first-time buyers, young families. It goes across the board, but it's exciting to see, because I keep hearing from people in Shaker who want to downsize, that there's no place to go, that they're comfortable in staying into older age. So I think this is an exciting. As far as programming goes, I think we can do more through our rec department. We have a number of programs for our seniors, but I always think that there's room for improvement and increased investment.
Thank you. Mr. Zimmerman?
Sure. So yeah, that's right. The truth is, we really don't do a lot of senior programming here in Shaker Heights. My mom lives in Beechwood, and she's very involved in Beechwood seniors, and they do all kinds of different things for the Beechwood seniors. We really don't have a program that's quite like that. And frankly, I think that's something, a deficiency, that I would like to see, I would like to see changed. But the other thing that I would mention is that where we do, I think, shine is we do provide important supports for our seniors. We actually contract with a social worker, because from time to time, our first responders occasionally encounter seniors who are in distress, health-wise, mentally, whatever the case may be. And that's why we have a social worker on call available to work with us. And like I said, our safety forces, they're on the lookout for that. And many times, they've been able to intervene and help someone in need. And that's a really, really good function of city government. I think we should all be proud of.
Yes, thank you. So I agree with Anne that homes on the first floor, or homes with first-floor masters are critical. Some of the other areas that people have told me that are important as they age in place are connections to the city hubs, right? So have to have easy access to services and amenities, assistance with upkeep of their home and their yards. And there is actually a movement going on across the country, and it's called the Village. And what happens is that it's essentially a group of people that come together to help one another, provide these services. They understand what services they need. They communicate with each other. And it's really like they're able to access what services they need and, you know, not take the others. And it provides a real community, older people, or people as they're aging in place. And I think that that would be something interesting to look at.
Okay, thank you. Shaker Heights has an aging infrastructure. Its roads and especially its sewers and water lines. Repair or replacement is costly. Resources are dear. How fast do you believe we should repair and replace them? How do you feel that cost should be financed? And that goes first to Ms. Williams.
Thank you. So there are a couple of questions, there are a couple of concepts there. And I guess I would start with, we, obviously, we do have an aging infrastructure, there's sewers and roads. And I think the sooner that we can do the replacements and the repairs, the better off we are. However, we've got a capital plan, and as we look at our capital plan, it's a 10-year capital plan, and we're trying to figure out exactly when we're going to be doing the projects. Of course, as you know, in an aging, with this, with an aging house, you have things that come up suddenly, and we have to fund those. We have used a variety of funding methods to pay for these infrastructures. We paid for it out of our funds. We've done some financing on it. I think it's going to have to continue to be a mixed use on this. And I think we're going to have to look at one of the, one of the great... going to have to look at, one of the, one of the great things about our city departments is they're very effective in getting grants, and they continue to, we're going to try to get grant funding for this as well.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Sure, I completely agree with the premise of the question. We're more than a century old, and, yes, we have sewers that are actually more than a century old, and they kind of function that way, especially when it rains really hard. We need to do something about that, and we are in council. We have adopted our 10-year capital plan, and it's all based on available resources and sort of grading where we have the most need, and we're moving forward with that. And you probably noticed that if you're having any difficulty getting around town, that's because of our plan. We're really moving forward. And I also want to emphasize again how we are trying to maximize and leverage resources. You know, Shaker Boulevard, that's a state road, that's an 80/20 match, 80% from other sources, from the state and so on, and 20% from the city of Shaker Heights. We actually sold our water lines a number of years ago to the city of Cleveland, and in return, they're maintaining them and fixing them at a very rapid rate, more rapid than any other inner-ring suburb in Cleveland, with the exception of Euclid. That will make it easier for us to get around, and we'll have safer streets and sewers. Time's up.
Thank you. Ms. Megan Hart?
I just have a really quick comment, and that is directly to the sewer question. I'm just, I don't, again, I'm not on council, so I do not permit to all the information, so I might be wrong on this, but it does strike me that something like, the magnitude of the sewer problem that we do have, and particularly the Lowmont area, I'm just not sure if this is something that maybe needs to rise up a little bit to level of emergency. People are telling me they're concerned about the resale value of their home because the water and sewage does back up in general when it rains. So again, I would welcome actually a conversation with the council members to know what their thoughts are on that.
Thank you. Anne?
Yes, on the prior aging discussion, one note to add is that as part of our teen center discussions, we have talked about multi-generational programming, which is a wonderful way to involve all ages of the community together, and everyone wins. As far as infrastructure is concerned, of course, this is a nationwide issue. I'm the vice president of the Northeast Ohio City Council Association. We have about 40 member cities, including the city of Cleveland. And one of the things that I've learned is that we are very fortunate here in Shaker Heights, and that we can afford to even have this discussion. There are many cities in our region that are having a hard time even providing basic services. In terms of our infrastructure, as has been mentioned, council has approved additional funding on streets and roads in the last year. And in terms of the financing, which no one's mentioned, I think it's important for us to be careful about how much debt we're getting into. We have capacity to borrow, that doesn't necessarily mean we should, because that hurts our cash flow in the future. So we need to balance that and be aware of it.
Okay, this is going to be the last question, and it's about something that most of us don't know anything about, so I thought it was a good thing to end with. Having attended multiple city council meetings this past year, I noted that a significant percentage of business is conducted on the emergency agenda, resolving in a waiver of multiple readings and discussion. This gives the appearance of backdoor agreement, rubber stamping, rushed and weakly considered decisions. What will you do to slow or stem the number of emergency agenda items and require full public venting and discussion of council decisions? And Mr. Zimmerman, it's your turn.
Sure. Great. Well, I understand the question, and I must somewhat respectfully disagree with the premise. It starts with our committees. We have very active committees that look at all of our legislation before it comes to council. Sometimes it is multiple committees. Just recently, I served as the acting chair of the finance committee because my colleague Nancy Morales was out of town, and we had a thorough discussion of really every single item that was on the council agenda, and I reported on it. And in many cases, there were other committees, such as Safety and Public Works, that also fully vetted the issue. Many times, we do waive the rules and pass things on first reading, and sometimes even on an emergency basis, but we do not do that on issues of great public concern, where for instance, people really want to weigh in on the issue. A perfect example would be the pit hole ban that was proposed a number of, a couple of years ago. We had multiple meetings on that, and finally, we made a decision.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak about it? Mr. Roder?
I like this question, and I agree with the premise of it, actually. On Monday night, there was a situation where something came up. It was proposed to vote on emergency, and someone in the audience raised their hand and said they had something to say about it, and we weren't allowed, because of the way council works, you can comment on any agenda at the beginning of the meeting, or you can comment on anything at the end of the meeting. But I felt like it was important to hear this person's voice, so I voted, it was a sole dissenting vote against emergency. So I'm not afraid to be that minority voice, and I think there certainly are times when we should slow down our business, give you a chance to be aware of it, give you a chance to comment on it. That's not to say that there aren't certain things that need to be moved through in emergency, but I believe that there is an opportunity, and I have a number of times voted against the emergency, to make sure that we all in the community can just be aware of what we're doing and make sure that you're very comfortable with the process that we're going through.
And Ms. Williams, could you want to say something?
I would. I would like to say that I think it is a balance. I think it does, and I understand this from the years of observing city council as a leading woman voter member, that it does look like a brush comes through, and oftentimes, sometimes there are deadlines that we are trying to meet. So it's a balance of trying to get a process through so we can apply for a grant, or we can execute a contract. And again, I agree that these topics have gone through multiple committees, and so they have had extensive discussions, and I understand that the public doesn't see those discussions because they're not at those community meetings. So I think, I appreciate the question. I think we do have to be mindful of that, and I think we have to be careful about helping employment. And again, it is a balancing.
Thank you. Ms. Megan Hart?
Thank you. I would just like to say that this really goes to my earlier point about having the committee meetings really be publicized and have the agenda actually publicized. It's very difficult to find the agenda that's posted that day, and sometimes the meetings are 7:30. I commend the work that they're doing on the committee meetings. They do work hard, and I do think that some, this question, I think, really goes to transparency, and I think we could do a little bit better job on that, and I was there for that meeting, and I saw that, and I agree, I think that there needs to be an opportunity for, if it's appropriate, to take a moment and hear from audience members, because the prior meeting as well, there was a gentleman in the audience that was there for a specific issue, but he didn't end up asking his question because it was too late by the time the committee, the meeting, the council meeting was over, and it had already been moved. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a lot of cards here with questions. Many of them touched on topics that the speakers actually top, considered as they were speaking, so I don't feel too badly, but if you did not get your question answered, remember, you can meet the candidates in the lobby later. So I think we should all thank these candidates for their... And we'll have a little one-minute break while we bring up the school board candidates. Please take your seats.